This is our May the first, Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission meeting. Matthew, if you'd call the roll, please, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker? Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our April 17th meeting in your packets. Are there any questions? Hearing none, call for a motion, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Abstain.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, the subdivision site development plans were in your packet. Are there any questions? Hearing none, then they would be approved as in your packets. Any new business, Mr. Peterson? Before we begin tonight, I think there's some people here that have a question about the, Ben, what's the right word, the FEMA flood. We will address that at the end of this session tonight. And if anybody's here for the 2025-05-DP A B C V Holdings Greenwood Crossings, that has been postponed. So if you're here tonight to hear that, then that's been postponed. Mr. Moore, if you would call us into session, please, sir.
I request that you order that the Warren County zoning ordinance subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of all settlements effective as of this date be introduced as exhibits for each of the dicy areas. I further request that you order that the staff reports, all attachments together with the commission's file for each application be introduced as exhibits. Positively, I ask that all planning commission staff who score a listing before you with their open qualifications be reflected in the record for each area.
I swear to tell the truth. Thank you all very much. Our first item tonight is 2025-18Z County and 2025-V-07 David Buchanan and Judy Buchanan, Julie Moore, have filed an application to rezone 2.4 acres located on a portion of the property in the west corner of Lover's Lane and Mount Victor's Lane from ag to general business with a general development plan. The applicant has also filed a concurrent variance application regarding the setbacks in the Cemetery Road Overlay District and setbacks between incompatible land uses. So, Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting in June of 2024 for the property on the west corner of Lover's Lane and Mount Victor Lane. Here's their site plan. We will move through to an aerial view of the property. Current zoning of the property is RS-1A. Existing land use is agriculture. And then the future land use map designation was recently amended to commercial in March of 2025. And then here are some images of the property for reference. And we can reference back to those if you all are needing that. But there is their site plan again, their variance exhibit. So the applicants are proposing to rezone 2.43 acres from RS-1A to GB, general business, in order to continue operation of the existing retail floral business. And then the concurrent variance application is, as you said, for the required building setback and incompatible land use buffer. So we will move through the zone change request, just a small amendment for you all, and then we'll also look to the variance application. So if we will look over to page five to DPC number nine, just a small correction for you all in the staff report. The current DPC is actually supposed to read, "In the event the property ceases its floral sales operation for a continuous period exceeding six months, developer grants city-counting planning commission staff the limited power of attorney to modify and/or revert the property's flume classification, future land use map designation back to low-density residential and its zoning classification to ag without the necessity of an advertised public hearing." So that was just a small change from the last hearing, and we just wanted to make that amendment to you all. And then we'll look over to the variance application, which begins on the bottom of page five. And so, looking to the bottom, they are requesting three variances. The first is an 18.15-foot variance for the existing structure in the proposed GB district adjacent to a single-family residential district structure or use. The next is a 42.25-foot variance for the existing structure in the proposed GB district adjacent to a single-family residential district structure or use. And the final is a 17.25-foot variance for the rear yard landscape buffer between incompatible land uses. The zoning ordinance references are there below for those specific requirements. And then the variance findings are there midway down the page six, as well as their narrative addressing those findings necessary for you all to grant the variance. We will now look back to page one with some points to consider regarding the zone change application. The first is the required building setback and landscape buffer. Those two can be found under layout lot sizes and setbacks on page two. And so, looking to that, the proposed layout is depicted on the attached preliminary development plan, which is in front of you, which shows the existing commercial structures and proposed parking, as well as the potential future structure. The applicant agreed to this general layout in DPCs number four and number five. Lot sizes and setbacks will adhere to the requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance for the Cemetery Road Overlay District, except for the 50-foot building setback and 25-foot landscape buffer required when adjacent to residential use, for which the applicants have requested those variances that we just referenced. If the proposal moves forward, the applicants will have to further apply for and seek approval of an overlay development plan for the existing structure to remain in its current location. We will then look over to page three to the building materials and building orientation about midway down the page. New development in the Cemetery Road Overlay District is subject to specific design standards, which includes standards for high-quality building materials. The current building materials appear to exceed the 75% maximum allowed in the overlay district for architectural metal panels utilizing concealed fasteners. If the project moves forward, the applicants will have to seek approval of an overlay development plan through the urban growth design review board. If the current building is found to be out of compliance with current overlay requirements, the applicants will have to work with the DRB to retrofit the existing structure. And then looking down to building orientation, the Cemetery Road Overlay standards also require that all building walls facing any non-Cemetery Road right-of-way have some form of articulated relief at a minimum of a 24-inch offset or change in direction every 30 feet. The existing structures in the area subject to the zone change application do not comply with this requirement. And again, if the project moves forward, the applicants will have to seek approval of an overlay development plan through the design review board for which the, or excuse me, to address compliance with building orientation requirements. And those are the points to consider. Outside of that, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. And so, staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion tonight. And that's all that I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jenny. I think the main point you brought up is it's subject to the overlay district if this is approved tonight.
Yes, for those various requirements.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Davenport?
Thank you.
Anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Jenny. No, I don't think so. I'm happy to answer any questions. We had a pretty good debate and discussion about this in March, so I'm happy to answer anything y'all might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Chris, I got to swear to you in.
Chris Davenport, 921 College Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport, representing the applicant? All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? All right. Commissioners, we have the first item is the zoning map amendment and then also the variance amendment. So I would call for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2025-18Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items in the presented staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Matthew?
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, we call for a motion on the variance, please.
I make a motion to approve the request for a variance, docket number 2025-V-7, an 18.5-foot variance for the existing structure, proposed GB district adjacent to the single-family residential district structure or use, and a 42.25 variance for the existing structure in the proposed general business district, GB district adjacent to a single-family residential district structure or use, and a 17.25-foot variance for the rear yard landscape buffer between incompatible land uses. This testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the granting of this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character or the general vicinity, will not cause hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action on the zone change unless a request is made for a legislative body to hear the item. So it's a final action. Our next item tonight is 2025-19Z BG A and J Strong, care of Josh Strong, has filed an application for a zone approximately 5/10 of an acre located 2025-40 Nashville Road from RS-1A, single-family residential to GB, general business with the general development plan. Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in November for the property at 2540 Nashville Road, and this property should look familiar. The same property was before you all back in March, where you approved a future land use map amendment, which is displayed here. It's now currently designated for future use of commercial. And here are the property photos that we can reference as needed. And apologies on the concept plan. I don't know what the issue is there. But if you need to see the full copy, it is in your packet on page, uh, seven. Thanks, Ben. The applicants are proposing to rezone the property from RS-1A to GB, general business, in order to develop the property with up to 6,000 square feet for a retail building and associated parking. And we just have one item for your consideration, and that's on page two under the natural features. We've just noticed, noted that there are numerous mature trees located on the property, and a majority of the existing mature trees are located central to the development and will be removed in order to accommodate the proposed development, though the applicants did agree to a 10-foot do-not-disturb buffer around the perimeter of the property. In our review of the application, we found that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, and we found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions of staff? All right. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or the representative here, Mr. Davenport?
Yes, Chair Warren. Good evening. This application, you all may remember when we discussed it in March. My client originally had plans and hopes of having a billboard on this lot along with the retail building. We jettisoned the billboard and working with the staff, they just did not think that was appropriate in this area, given the neighborhood that sits behind it. So the request is technically GB, although the building's limited to 6,000 square foot, where normally GB would be 10,000 square feet. And the uses are greatly limited as well. No drive-through, no vehicle sales. So it's kind of, I called it in March GB Lite or Neighborhood Business Plus. That's kind of what this is to try to fit in with the area. So I would, I would request a recommendation for it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport? Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Hearing none, we call for the zoning map amendment, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 2025-19ZBG. Based upon this testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing. Second.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made for the legislative body to hear the item. Thank you all for being here tonight. We have two cleanup items. Can we do these together, Mr. Peterson? Okay. We have four and five on your agenda, commissioners. 2025-20Z County, City-County Planning Commission, the applicant, and Greg and Jennifer Cannon, the owners, have filed an application for a zone approximately 3/10 of an acre located Zero and 9725 Nashville Road from Ag and RE Residential State to RE Residential State and Agriculture. The next item is 2025-21Z County, City-County Planning Commission, the applicant, and Lawrence and Kelly and Greer, the owners, have filed an application for a zone, approximately one acre located 2743 Fairview Bowling Springs Road from Ag to RE Residential State. And so those are just kind of cleanup items, if that's a fair statement. And commissioners, any questions regarding those?
Mr. Warren, you might just inquire if either the board or anyone in the audience would like to hear it separately, or if there's any opposition.
Yes. Is there anyone, thank you, Ben. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question or opposition to these requests? So we will, we will call for, let's just do them, four and five to get together? Yeah, four and five together. Matthew?
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number 2025-20Z County and 2025-21Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendments are in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that these motions include the summary of evidence and testimonies presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. So both items were approved, and planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made from the legislative body to hear the item. And I think we have some old business, Mr. Peterson, regarding the flood plan or the...
No, I think you just move on to discussion items, and if you're...
Okay. So we have two people here that would like to talk, or one, or regarding, if one of you would come to the microphone, please, and let's hear your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Ladanna Froch at 7119 Stone Mead Lane, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
What was your first name again?
Ladanna.
Ladanna. You swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ladanna Froch, and I am speaking as the president of the HOA Board for Weatherstone Subdivision on Russellville Road. In February of 2021, the front part of our neighborhood flooded, blocking off our residents' only entrance. We were told at that time that the repairs had been made to avoid future flooding. However, in February of 2025, and again in April, large sections of our neighborhood were flooded yet again and became completely impassable prohibiting emergency services. The April 2025 flood was significantly worse than the two previous floods. Several homes had flooded crawl spaces and were inches away from water coming into their homes. One homeowner was forced to kayak to their home with their newborn baby. A disabled veteran had to evacuate through a barbed wire fence to receive medical care. Board members were out knocking on homeowners' doors at 3:00 a.m. to warn them of the rapidly rising waters. Neighborhood retention areas are only designed to take on the storm water from the neighborhood. Due to the poor design of the drainage on Russellville Road, significant, I'm sorry, significant amounts of water are draining from the north side of Russellville Road into the Weatherstone retention areas. As Russellville Road continues to be developed, it changes the flood pattern, and then the flooding gets worse each time. Because of this, our properties are devalued and residents are regularly being trapped. These floods are causing our residents to have lost wages at work and concerns that emergency services cannot reach us when we are underwater. We have reached out to Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Judge Executive Gorman, and we were only told that an engineer would be looking at the situation this summer. We are asking that the Planning and Zoning Commission cease all construction within two miles of our subdivision until the stormwater issues in our area have been evaluated and resolved. We are very thankful for the temporary gravel roads that the county has provided, but we need a permanent solution. The gravel roads have also caused damages to vehicles and residential properties without repairs being provided. We are asking for a meeting with the appropriate stakeholders to discuss a solution to ensure protection of both our properties and our lives. What are the next steps to getting this meeting scheduled?
Thank you, ma'am. If you would just have a seat a second, if anybody else, we're going to come back to you in just a minute. Sir, do you have anything you would like to add?
No.
Oh, okay. So Mr. Peterson is our, heads up our planning and zoning with all of the staff, and maybe if you'll come back to the microphone, and I didn't know, sir, if you had something you wanted to add. And let Mr. Peterson address your concerns. They were very well spoken. Thank you for being here tonight, and...
So a couple things, I think, that are, that are going on that maybe it sounds like silence, and it is to you guys, and I certainly understand your pain and definitely understand the concerns. One thing to keep in mind, the planning commission as a body does not have the authority to, I guess, address any of the items that you requested. That really is the authority of the Warren County Fiscal Court. As far as ceasing construction in any area of the county, that would take an act of the legislative body, which in this case is the fiscal court or some areas of city limits closer into town. So we don't, we don't have any authority at the planning commission to do that. We can only operate under the regulations and the legislation that has been passed that we have the authority to operate under. Most of our job, I guess if you will, comes in the preapproval, pre-construction process, and so we certainly hear those concerns as well. Doesn't help already constructed Weatherstone understand that. The second piece is, we have started conversations with staff at the direction of the county judge and the mayor of Bowling Green, and trying to figure out how to respond. It's a very complicated situation, very complicated groundwater situation with a lot of new information that has popped up, and then a lot of that, a lot of the city and county staff are still responding to single reports and road fixes and those types of things. We definitely have not forgot you. We are in, at the planning commission, leading, co-leading, I guess is a better term, with city-county public works, city-county stormwater discussions on education piece of it, missing pieces of information of groundwater system mostly, and how that interacts with the rainstorm. We are also cities in partnership with Western Kentucky University, the Crawford Hydrology Lab, as well as the Mesonet folks, I forgot their acronym, but the ones who monitor all of the rain gauges and all of that stuff. They're working on a hydrologic model. Those things take time. As far as immediate fixes for existing neighborhoods, Weatherstone, Stonecrest, and others, those will be having to take, have to be taken on an individual basis by the county on that, because we're, since the construction's finished, we're kind of out of that. Now, a piece of that is this decision-making process as well, and we'll have to figure out what that means for this decision-making process. So we are addressing that as well. So there are some things being discussed, but I have no concrete information or answers to give to you right now. And I think I would certainly make sure you keep addressing your magistrate and the county judge and the fiscal court your concerns, and hopefully you'll get response sooner rather than later. But I do know it's in the forefront of their mind, and they are looking at things. But that's, that's the best answer I can get tonight.
I guess I would just say, please, please keep us in consideration and all of the other subdivisions that, as you all continue to develop down Russellville Road, you are directly affecting the lives of hundreds of residents. We have 132 homes that couldn't go to work, that couldn't get groceries, and I realize that you all put in a road, but we still, then that took up a whole day of putting in a road and two whole days to remove the road. I know that that seems like a minor inconvenience if you don't live there, but it truly affects, I've lived there through all three floods, and it's been a horrible experience for 132 homes, now three times. And I fully think that all 132 homes expect for it to continue to happen until there is a permanent solution. It has caused PTSD for some homeowners, mental health issues, the amount of residents who had to reach out to their therapist during that time. Like I said, a newborn was kayaked home, like insane situations. So we just, please, like, we're just respectfully asking for a solution.
Yes, ma'am. And you did a very good job of articulating this, and our staff is very professional, and they are working with Warren County Public Works in the city. And as Mr. Peterson said, there's no, there's no resolve today.
And we understand that.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And I say that very respectfully. They're working on it. So thank you for being here tonight and expressing for the 130 homes in that neighborhood. And I can promise you this, that our staff is on top of this, okay?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sir, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Mr. Peterson, do we have any discussion items tonight? We have a meeting in two weeks?
One fifteen, yeah.
Big agenda?
There's seven items.
Seven items, all right. Commissioners, thank you all for being here tonight, and staff, thank you for all you do. Mr. Moore, thank you for being here. Hampton? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.